Hello and welcome to the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce candidate forum for the Allegheny County Board of Education candidates for the 2020 presidential primary election on June 2, 2020. I am Stu Zavsky, Executive Director of the Chamber. There are nine candidates on the ballot for the Board of Education, six of which will move on to the general election in November. With us today are Crystal Bender, David Bond, Tammy Fraley, Michael Lepdick, Stephen Lewis, Deb Littman, Tony Adoviani, Edward Root, and Linda Widmire. For the benefit of those viewing or listening to this forum, all candidates will be given the same question and have the same amount of time to answer each question. The candidates will be given a notification as time expires. Additionally, we will alternate which candidate answers first. Going on to the first question goes to Crystal first. Tell us about yourself, your qualifications, and why you're running for the Board of Education.
Thank you. My name is Crystal Bender. I grew up in Flintstone and currently live in Cumberland with my husband Jeremy. Our two sons, Lance is a freshman at Fort Hill High School and Carson is in fifth grade at South Penn Elementary School. We own and operate ServiceMaster of Allegheny County and also Furniture Medic by Bender. I am a current board member on the Holding Hands for Haley Foundation and also served for five years as a board member for Lighthouse Christian Academy. I chose to run because I think I can be a positive influence on the board. I think I can work as a team with whoever I would be with if elected. I have children in the system, so the future of the education in Allegheny County is important to me, especially with one in high school and one in elementary moving up. And I have a business perspective that I bring along with me from managing both businesses and the finances, and I think that I can do the job if given the chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. David?
Well, like Crystal, I'm also a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. I went from K-12 in Mount Savage back when it was a high school. I've attended Allegheny College, Frostburg State, and graduated from National University of Health Sciences. Since 1988, I've held my doctorate in chiropractic and have been in private practice for that entire time. My wife and I have six grown children, all of them attended and graduated from Allegheny County Public Schools. I also teach and I develop online courses for chiropractic assistants and chiropractors and other health professionals, and I own, also own a software company and have developed and sell and support two pieces of software for health professionals all across the world. So my interest in running two years ago was, really wasn't at the top of my list, was to run for office, but having raised children in the system, there were things that I thought could be better. So I talked to a lot of people about it and finally decided to run. So I'm running again because I think there's still stuff to be accomplished, and I also have a business perspective, and I feel that the role of a board member is to look at all the options that are placed in front of them and make the decision that's best for the majority of the constituents in the county to best affect our students, our teachers, our staff, and the community in general.
Thank you, David. Deb?
Hi, my name is Tammy Fraley. I currently serve on the board and am running for reelection. The reason why I started, when I started four years ago, actually started six years ago and tried to run the first time and did not make it on, but then I came back two years later and ran again. The reason why is because I do have children in the school system. I currently have, I have four boys. One is in Pittsburgh and he's 25. One's 21 and he's in Kaiser. And then I have an eighth grader that goes to Braddock Middle School and a fourth grader that goes to Westside Elementary School. I wanted to run because at the time I felt that a parent's voice wasn't being heard. I attended various meetings prior to even running for the board and saw that, I felt that there needed to be a parent voice on the board as well as somebody with a business background and a consulting background. I am a CPA out of the state of Texas, and I'm a senior system analyst supporting government projects and have been doing that for over 15 years. I think that running for the board, what we need to do is work together as a team to make a difference. I see the economic impact that the school system can have on our community, and especially at this time, we really need to focus on working together holistically as a community to make a difference for our kids as well as for the employees of the system. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael?
Thank you, Stu. And I want to thank the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce for hosting this very important forum. My name is Michael Lepdick. I am a native of Western Maryland who has had the honor and privilege of living and working in Allegheny County my entire life. I do not have any children in the system. However, I do have a niece who is a junior at Mountain Ridge High School. I have nearly 18 years' experience of professional management, where the past seven years have been spent in the private security industry, as a security supervisor and trainer. Academically, I have earned an associate and bachelor's degree in psychology from Ashworth College and a master's degree in psychology from North Central University. I'm currently seeking my PhD in addiction research from North Central University. I'm running in this election because I know my extensive background in business management, private security, and psychology will be able to benefit in promoting a safer environment for all students, faculty, and staff, enhance the health services and anti-bullying efforts, and to install management personnel that will make the necessary decisions that are student and teacher focused. I am a proven leader who will work tirelessly to make our public education system the best it can be, and I hope that I can earn the citizen's support as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
My name is Steve Lewis, and I'm, again, a lifetime resident of Allegheny County. I grew up in West Newport and attended Bruce High School, graduated in 1971. After I graduated, I went to Glenville State College. That's out about the middle of West Virginia. I graduated in 1975 with a BA in education and biology. When I graduated from Glenville, I spent two years down in Talbot County teaching. I taught science in Talbot County. In 1977, I returned to Allegheny County and took a job teaching math and science at Fort Hill High School. I taught math and science and coached football, track, and wrestling until 1990, where I was assigned a position of assistant principal at Bell High School. I was at Bell High School for four years. Not only was I the assistant principal, but I was also the athletic director. So there was a lot of things to do and learn as an assistant principal. I returned back after four years in 1994 to Fort Hill High School as principal and was principal at Fort Hill High School for 20 years. In 2014, I went to the central office, the maintenance department and transportation department, where I was the supervisor of athletics, the Title IX coordinator, and the coordinator of energy for the Allegheny County School System. Again, I have three children that went through the Allegheny County School System. I have five grandchildren that went through the Allegheny County School System. I retired three years ago in 2017, and I think with all my past experience, which is all in education, I can certainly help efficiently operate the Allegheny County School System. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Deb?
Hi, my name is Deb Littman. I grew up in Allegheny County as well. I went to elementary, middle, and high school here in the county, graduated from Fort Hill High School. I attended college outside of the area and then lived in the DC, lived and worked in the DC and Philadelphia area for a while, and moved back to Cumberland about 15 years ago with my husband to raise our family here. We have three children who are all in high school in the school system right now, who've all attended since elementary school. So I know firsthand how the decisions that the board makes impact students directly. My professional background is primarily in nonprofit communications. I've served as director of communications for schools, other nonprofits, and I've had direct, directly worked with students in a program for parenting and pregnant teens in Philadelphia. And I've served on a number of boards in the community here, including as president, so I know the importance of working together as a board, as a team, and respecting one another. And so, the reason I ran for the board, or I decided to run for the Board of Education is that I think that education is extremely important, and I think that I have something to bring to the board, and I want to be part of making a stronger future for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Tony?
Hello. Hey, I'm, excuse me. I may end up having to look around a bit because my kids are running around and my wife's at work, so you have to forgive me there. So I'm Tony Adoviani, and I own and run Ristorante Adoviani. Most of you know me or have been there. And I've been doing that for 15 years, and in that time, I've gotten to know a lot of people. I do a lot of talking, and I do a lot of listening, let's say. So one of the things I think I'm really good at is listening to people. And one of the things I think that any elected officials, particularly with, when it comes to education, is definitely listening to people. I think very often elected officials don't do enough of that. So I don't necessarily, I'm hearing all these people's qualifications, and I'm way underqualified here. But I think some fresh, excuse me, some fresh eyes and a fresh perspective is possibly what's needed to, you know, to move forward with different decisions. And, you know, I feel like every year we hear about the same things, the same things, the same things, and I think that I can bring some positive change to the board. I also have kids in the system, two still. My daughter Sophia is in the eighth grade, going into ninth, and my son Antonio is going into the fifth grade at Bel Air Elementary. My son Darian was at Allegheny, but he graduated a couple of years back. So I'm familiar with the school system, and I went through it as well. 1994, graduated Fort Hill. You know, my biggest thing is that I just want to, I spent the last couple of years complaining. You know, you hear stories, you read the paper, you're talking to people, and everybody's complaining, including myself. And I thought to myself, well, stop complaining and try to get involved and try to do something. So my intention, if I can get elected, is just to do everything I can do to help teachers, help students, and help Allegheny County have the best education system we can.
Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Edward?
Okay, my name is Ed Root, and I'm seeking election of the Board of Education of Allegheny County because that's what I do and I've enjoyed doing it. My entire life has been in education. My experiences have been broad. I've learned a lot from them. I started my career as a teacher here in Allegheny County. I've been a professor, department head, division head, and dean at Frostburg State University, and I've learned how hard it is to be a teacher and how rewarding it can be. Along the route, I have learned a lot about budgets, school law, policies, regulations, and laws that govern education. I've served two terms on the Maryland State Board of Education, which is all you're allowed to serve, and I was appointed by both a Democratic and Republican governor, which is kind of unique. My colleagues elected me president in each of my last four years, and I was given the national award by the Association of State Boards of Education for distinguished service and leadership. I've been elected to the Allegheny County Public School Board of Education twice and have served as president twice. In 2018, I was given the Maryland Association of Boards of Education's state award for distinguished school board service. I've either chaired or served on every major task force or commission on education over the last 30-year period. I've also chaired a national commission on athletics and achievement, which consists of representatives of 20 states, which made recommendations to all states on such matters as athletic safety, coaches certification, eligibility requirements, and participation. In 2003, I was named the Maryland Education Leader of the Year. Well, those are some of my experiences on paper, but the value is what I've learned and what I can bring to the table to help Allegheny County Public Schools. I hope to be able to continue to learn and grow and do all that I can to help the schools of Allegheny County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Linda?
Hi, everyone. I'm Linda Widmire, and I'm a graduate of Allegheny High School. I'm a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. I attended Allegheny Community College, which shows how old I am, and I hold a bachelor's degree from Geneva College in Pennsylvania. I have been married to my husband for almost 43 years, and we have four amazing children who were also products of the Allegheny County Public School System, and we have three grandchildren who are the light of our lives. I started my career at Fort Hill with the Allegheny County Public School System. I've spent 30 years advocating and working for the kids of our county. I started with a program that was a statewide initiative, and it addressed at-risk kids and how we could help them achieve the goal of a high school diploma. We tutored, we did career assessments, we did field trips, educational field trips out of this county, because many of the kids I worked with were economically disadvantaged, and they had never been farther than Cumberland. So in 2002, I left and went to work for the local management board as their youth strategies director, and that was a program that was funded through the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Protection, and we addressed substance abuse, juvenile delinquency, and recidivism in the South Cumberland community. I think my experience in the school system and working with the families and students in our area gives me a good outlook and a good perspective on what our school system can do to help our kids.
Thank you, Linda. Next question goes to Dr. Bond first. In the 2020 Maryland Legislative Session, the blueprint for Maryland's future, also referred to as the Kerwin Bill, was passed. What are your thoughts about the bill and its implementation in Allegheny County? Dr. Bond?
My biggest concern with the Kerwin Bill is how it's going to be financially floated down the road. The costs incurred with Kerwin are tremendous. We still really don't know all of the implications of what's going to happen with Kerwin or how it's going to affect our students, our schools, the community, and what portions of that are going to be funded and what portions will continue to be funded. So there's still a lot of unanswered questions with it. As a matter of fact, I just read that it's being suggested by the Republican delegations to see if it's going to be vetoed. So I don't even know for sure that, I guess we don't know for sure that it's going to be passed. So as far as, you know, answering specific questions about the Kerwin down the road, we have seen a few positive things in what they called like pre-Kerwin, where we had some money to give increases to our, to our teachers, which was, you know, a good step in the right direction. Our teachers have been, especially in this county, have been paid less than what they deserve. Unfortunately, we're a county that doesn't have a lot of extra money to dump into education without state funding. So we'll have to see where that falls or where Kerwin ends up in its final form. So that's about all I can say about that.
Thank you, David. Tammy?
I believe that the Kerwin Bill and what it could do for Allegheny County is tremendous. The ability to have funding for more teachers, but also it looks at the different levels of pre-K and having universal pre-K, which is very important, especially in our area. We know that the impact that it can have on educating our children as young as possible and getting them into a system that allows them to learn and grow is something that's very valuable for our area. Also, as Dr. Bond just mentioned, the ability to pay our teachers a salary that is comparable, at least, to what's happening in the rest of the state will also be beneficial. But also, the last thing is the career technology and the focus on that. The Kerwin Commission had a work group that was specific to that, and making sure that we continue to use our career center to move that forward, I think, will be beneficial. As far as the cost and the concern on the cost, I think that that was still very fluid at the end of this session, and knowing what's going to take for Allegheny County, I think, needs to be very, very well looked into. Not everybody had the same opinion coming out of the legislation on how much it was going to cost. So I think we do need to be very careful and not put something down because of the cost, because the benefits could be quite wide. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael?
I believe the recommendations are outstanding. I mean, anytime we can support our teachers with providing them with salary that is beneficial to them and the job that they do is imperative. I know, speaking with a lot of teachers across the county, they don't feel like they're appreciated. They don't feel like they're receiving the salary that they deserve, and the fact of the matter is, they really don't. Anytime we can provide our school system with additional money, whether it's from the state or the county, we need to do so. And these recommendations for, you know, advances in career technology is essential for students that may not want to bridge to higher education and may want to join the workforce straight out of high school. So it's something that we really need to take a look at and really negotiate with county government and the state government to ensure the money is available so we can improve our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
Well, I think we all think that Kerwin's a great idea, and it certainly had a positive impact with the teachers when they were able to raise their salaries here within the year. The biggest problem is funding. We all know that. The other thing is, you get so many mixed messages on Kerwin. I mean, it looks good, it's going to go, it has to go. This is the recommendation that it has to go into effect. Then there's going to be changes, and I just don't think downstate with the legislators and everything, we're really sure of what's going to happen. It's hard to make a lot of long-range plans when you're expecting this money to come, but you're not sure it's going to come. And I think the idea behind Kerwin is great. I think it provides some help in technology with the Career Center. I agree 100% on that. I think it can help with teacher salaries because we're way behind. The biggest problem that I think we all see is, is it going to be funded? Until we know that for sure, it's very hard to make long-range plans.
Thank you, Stephen. Deb?
I think that the Kerwin legislation is potentially very exciting for Allegheny County. There are a lot of unknowns in terms of funding, and we'll have to wait and see what happens in terms of that. But the core idea that students will receive the same level of education regardless of their zip code is what I think is so great for us out here in Allegheny County. The, this legislation would fund pre-K, like people said, career education, mental health services, and of course, increased teacher pay. And all of those things are very exciting for Allegheny County. In addition, there will be, what it sounds like, grants for areas of poverty, grants for declining enrollment, and those are all things that can benefit our county. So I think Kerwin could be a very exciting opportunity for Allegheny County. It's just a matter of seeing what happens with funding in general, but also, I think, in light of the COVID-19 spending that's had to happen unexpectedly. So, but I think I'm optimistic about Kerwin.
Thank you, Deb. Tony?
Well, excuse me. I don't think I know enough about it, the insides and outs, you know, 100% of it, to say whether I like it or don't, or I agree with it or I don't. I know that from what I do understand about it, there are some things that are really good and some things that I definitely don't think are right. One thing I think for sure is that, to me, it's difficult to say that the same amount of spending and the same amount of whatever should happen. Like Montgomery County schools, they're different than Allegheny County schools. And Allegheny County schools are different than, you know, Prince George's County schools. And I just feel like there's got to be, for me, the more localized we can make decisions and more localized we can spend money, that's better. Because I know that with the money always comes a lot of bureaucracy and red tape and a whole lot more beholden, you know, we're going to be a whole lot more beholden to what, what they say downstate, what they say, you know, down the way, because they're making decisions for us, and I think that we should definitely look more at things that look good for us, but then, you know, push away the things that we don't, that don't work out for Allegheny County. So I would say we have to look, I personally would have to look at it a lot closer, but just on its face, I would not say, oh yeah, let's definitely do that no matter what, because it means more money. Because sometimes that's not always the best thing.
Thank you, Tony. Dr. Root?
Okay, I would echo some of the things that I've already heard, so I won't spend too much time on them. I am in favor of Kerwin, but I am aware that it has very serious implications for funding, such serious considerations, that it may not be passed exactly as proposed. But I do believe that we'll pass the state legislature, but the governor has concerns about whether or not the state of Maryland can afford it. And I don't see him vetoing the bill, but I'm not sure that it's going to pass the way it was proposed. Funding is a serious problem, and it's particularly serious for Allegheny County's commissioners, who are going to feel a lot of financial pressure, because it's going to cost them more money. The money is going to be phased in, and that makes the later years a problem. If we don't have enough money in the budget in the early years to fund it, we're certainly not going to fund the later years. The biggest problem that it has is it does not have a dedicated revenue stream, and that is a tradition in Maryland. They pass things for education, but they don't have dedicated revenue streams. You may recall, the reason why Maryland has a state lottery was that the money was to go to education. Well, most of the money didn't go to education. The reason why we passed the casino gambling was the money was to go to education. Again, you may recall slots for tots. Well, again, most of the money didn't go to education. A couple of things about Kerwin that I do like is the emphasis on pre-K. You may not be aware that Allegheny County has pre-K, but it isn't funded by the state as part of the regular education formula funding. We have to take money in the Board of Education out of what is funded for K-12 to fund pre-K. So Kerwin will take care of that, and that's very important. One of the things that is extremely important is that it will improve teacher salaries.
You need to wrap it up on there.
It's been, okay, it's been nearly 20 years since we had Thornton. Thornton put money in the schools, but it was only $2 billion over six years. Now, in Allegheny County, in the six previous years that I was on the board, there were only three pay raises, 1%, 1%, 1.5%. Meanwhile, health costs are going up.
Dr. Root, we need to move on.
Okay. Teachers deserve better.
Thank you. Linda?
Thank you, Stu. I have some concerns with Kerwin. Now, let me first say that I think every child in our state deserves a quality education, but I think Kerwin looks better on paper than it does when it comes time to implement it. It concerns me that there is not a true funding source to cover the Kerwin. If, like Dr. Root, with Thornton came out, and I'm afraid we're going to repeat history with underperforming schools that have no accountability whatsoever. And so it concerns me that, as Deb said, seeing what's going on with COVID-19 and what's going to happen with our economy, I don't think Allegheny County can afford to fund the Kerwin. I think we need to look at it a little closer. I think it's a little bit misrepresenting when you look at some of the percentages. The majority of the money does go to teacher salary, and I'm not sure that's the right way to go. Some of the things, as far as mental health and supplies for teachers, some of the other programs, the percentages are not good at all. And I think that's what we're making people believe, that there's all these programs that are going to improve our education, when in fact, it's not going to be that way. I'm not against Kerwin, but I think we need to take a long, hard look at the funding for that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal? Thank you, Linda. Crystal?
Okay, this is a tough one to go last on. I feel like I'm just going to echo a little bit of what everybody else has said. I've looked into Kerwin. I've tried to do some research. Same worry everybody else has, locally, are we going to be able to afford it in a few years? But on the side of education, obviously, we want the money if it's there. We want the teachers to have a raise. I know some of that's been phased in already. I believe there were some social workers hired. That benefits the behavioral and mental health side of things, which our county desperately needs more of. The teachers get the relief from that, with the social workers being in the close schools to provide services to those students, so the teachers can focus more on teaching. And that's fantastic. Again, accountability, when it gets to us, I hope that the board or whoever is going to be in charge of Kerwin passes, make sure that money is applied to where it was meant to be, and it serves its purpose as to where it's supposed to go. But as far as if it passes or not, that's not for any of us to vote on. And I think we just have to sit tight and wait and see what happens.
Thank you, Crystal. Question number three starts out with Tammy first. I think the theme here has been funding with regards to Kerwin. Detail how you think it should be funded. Tammy?
As we've been part of, from a local perspective, I think it was Crystal that just says, you know, we don't get a vote in how the funding occurs or even how Kerwin ends up in the end, but we can advocate. And I do think that for the purposes of ensuring that it's equitable across the state, that the funding should come from the state. Therefore, it would be able to be equitable across all the counties based on their population, based on their student counts, and their level of poverty. Unfortunately, you know, Allegheny County oftentimes is put to the side because we're in Western Maryland, and nobody thinks it goes past Habers Town. So we do need to make sure that we advocate so that we can get as much of it funded at the state and federal level, so that our local economy is not impacted as much. But we do also need to work together to get a better relationship with our county commissioners, because I do believe that the county putting money into this will show their support of education in this, in support of what education can do for economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael?
Thanks, Stu. The Allegheny County budget for the fiscal year 2020 equals about 34% for, for education. So the requested amount from the Board of Education was about $32 million. The approved was about 30, 30.7, which is about a shortfall of $1.1 million. So building that relationship with the county, you know, with the county commissioners and negotiating with them, $1.1 million is the shortfall that was requested from the Board of Education. Just having that funding would really, would really help with a lot of the issues with funding of Kerwin. With that being said, the casino revenue, we don't see, when I ran for county commissioner, I stressed this completely. I said that, you know, we don't get enough money from casino revenue. And it's something that those numbers have to be adjusted. If those numbers are adjusted, and we can get some return of investment from, from the, from the casino revenue, we could fund a lot of the educational programs that we, that we have, that we have here. And it's something that we need to look into. We need to build that rapport with, with the county. We need to build the rapport with the state. And we need to figure out how we can get the, the return from the casino, how we get those, those numbers increased. Because the revenue and the funding is there, we just need to, to get it to our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
Well, I get what everybody's saying, and I agree with them. It's a tough thing when you don't have the money stream and the guarantees that are there. We can work with the county commissioners. We can see if we can at least make maintenance of effort. It's very tough once you go and try to negotiate downstate. It would be great if everybody was funded equally, whether it's on a student count or whatever, whatever mathematical formula they could come up with, so everybody would get their fair share. But it doesn't seem to work that way. The other thing that's thrown a clink into this whole thing that I don't think we've talked about yet is the reason why we're on Zoom. The COVID-19 has thrown a big click into the economy, both local and state. And there's going to be, have to be some tough decisions that are made at the state level about how this money is going to be streamed out and get into the hands of, of locals and county commissioners and, and whatever it might be. We're at a tough time right now. And I think we have to rely on the governor. I think we have to rely on the legislatures to try to provide most of that revenue to us. I wish we had it. I wish there was a guarantee. But right now, there's a lot of unknowns because of this virus. It's tough.
Thank you, Stephen. Deb?
So I agree with, with what Tammy was saying, that this is a legislation that has been passed at a state level. And so hopefully, a lot of the funding would come from the state. It's my understanding that there's been talk about some of the funding coming from taxes on tobacco, legalization of sports betting. So those are two possible revenue streams, along with what several other people have said, redistributing some of the casino money that has not gone, gone to the public school systems and re-appropriating some of that so that the school systems in counties in Maryland see a bit more of that money.
Thank you, Deb. Tony?
Well, I think that as far as where the funding is going to come from is one of those questions that, like everybody else is talking, it's so up in the air right now. But if, when you talk about casinos, you know, for example, right now, and he just said about the COVID-19, well, the casinos closed. And who knows when they're going to open back up? All of them around the whole state are closed. So who knows how, how long till they get back on? Who knows if this happens again? I don't think that would be a source of funding that would be something that I would rely on. And when I hear things about tobacco sales and sports betting, I think to myself, how much money do we spend trying to get kids to not, and adults to not smoke cigarettes? But then how much money do we absolutely depend on from those sales? That kind of thing always blows my mind. So when it comes to funding sources, I'm not suggesting that I know the answer, but I think that I know what it shouldn't be. And I don't think that it should be casinos and tobacco and sports betting and the like.
Thank you, Tony. Ed?
Okay. How should Kerwin be funded? Well, I want to start with the state. And I would like to say that, first off, I don't want to see taxes increased. I don't like anyone does. So that means we probably have to reallocate monies from other places. And the two I would start with are the two that were passed in the name of education, but the bulk of the money never went to education. I don't think it would be feasible to take big chunks of the lottery, lottery money, or the casino gambling, and dedicate that to education. But a modest percentage increase would certainly go a long way towards solving the problem. Tony, you talked about sports betting. The courts have legalized sports betting now. It's legal to have sports betting. Maryland doesn't have it, because that will take an act of the legislature. If we're going to have it, then I don't see a whole lot of difference between it and a lottery and a casino gambling. So I would think a modest percentage of sports betting could be dedicated to education. But the other area that I think is likely to be fruitful is the new internet sales tax, which is relatively new. Within the last two years, Supreme Court has ruled that states can have an internet sales tax. Well, that's recent. It will grow unquestionably, and it's never been dedicated to anything. So part of that could be dedicated for education. At the county level, it's a lot harder, because Allegheny County is either the poorest or the next to the poorest county in the state of Maryland, depending on whether you want to use accessible tax base or median income. And the county commissioners are going to be hard pressed. You probably recall the articles where if it's fun, if Kerwin is funded the way it's predicted right now, they're going to have a whopping big property tax. But that's not going to make people happy, and particularly if the reason is to give money to education.
Let's wrap it up, Dr. Root.
Okay, I think the county is going to have to sit down and do some hard thinking. I think the Board of Education ought to meet with them and try to determine what the possibilities are.
Thank you, Ed. Linda?
I also think that we need to sit down and have a collaborative effort with the Board of Education, the county commissioners, even the local business owners, to discuss where this funding is going to come from. I don't think that our citizens can afford billions of dollars in extra taxes. We are a small community. We're an older community, and I really don't think people want to see their taxes increase. There has been talks about sports betting, but if you remember how hard it was to get gambling passed in this state, I'm not sure that's the answer. There's talk about taxing recreational marijuana. That's another thing that I don't think there are very many states that would say that's been real successful for them. I know a couple it has been. Colorado, for example, they've had a building boom. All of their roads are nice. They're building hospitals. They're doing all kinds of things. But I don't think we want to go that way. I think Kerwin could be an extra burden on the families that are really trying. And I think it needs to come from the state. If they want us to do this, they have to help us come up with a way to fund it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal?
Will you actually repeat the question one more time, please?
Regarding Kerwin, detail how you think it should be funded.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you had said at which level. Well, the state level, again, we're not going to have a decision in that. If casino funding or anything else that goes on, I'm okay with that. I heard one, somebody in legislation suggested a music downloading tax. So no matter what they do to fund it, it's going to cost all of us, as everybody else has already stated. The local level, and again, in the same, but with everybody else, I just don't know that you can raise property taxes anymore. It's going to cost people to move out of the area. We're going to have to sit down and brainstorm. I don't know what the answer is, but I fear that because of coronavirus, I'm wondering how the state is going to pay for it. There's an awful lot of relief money coming out of the state. It's going to eat up a lot of funds. And I just, I kind of speculate that maybe this is going to get delayed. I almost would agree with that. I think we need a little bit of time to see what's going to happen. So I can't tell you the answer of how they should fund it right now. Before coronavirus, it might have been different, but I think that everything is going to be on hold now for a little bit with that. Too much speculation.
Thank you, Crystal. Dr. Bob?
First, I'd like to say that I agree with what Crystal just said with, you know, people will leave the area of what Dr. Root said. I can also remember Governor Amali with a tax that he proposed on, on the wealthiest in Maryland, and how that was going to increase our revenue, our tax revenue. And what happened was, our tax revenue, if I remember correctly, actually went down because the wealthy left the state. And that's what's going to happen if this is too much of a burden tax-wise. You know, if you look at just local economy, I heard, I think it was Jake Shade this morning, he was talking on the radio. He said in the last month or two months, per month, the county tax revenue has decreased $500,000 a month. And that's just, that's based on 4,300 people in our county being unemployed right now. So the really big thing that's, that has to happen, it really has, you know, no control over the local board. That's a question you really can't answer. And having served on the board, we have very little control over, you know, we're up, depending up, depending always upon the county for, and state for funding. So unless our local economy improves, I mean, we lost West Vaco, we've lost most of CSX, you know, our, our infrastructure is really bad. And unless our local economy can improve, I don't see how Kerwin is going to possibly be funded, at least on a local level. If it's funded on the state level, I see that we'll lose a lot of businesses. And like somebody mentioned, internet tax, well, you know, there's things you can, you can hide your IP address and say you're from somewhere else. And there's all kinds of ways that it's going to be hard to fund it. So that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, David. Question number four goes to Michael Leptich first. The relationship between the Board of Education and the county commissioners has been strained over the years. What value can you bring to the Board of Education that will help improve that relationship?
Thanks, Stu. Yes, it has been strained, and it's, it's been strained for a long time. But unfortunately, until we have the right people in place, it's going to continue to be strained. I believe that with my management experience and part of that being, you know, negotiator through different businesses that I've managed, I think I can really bring, you know, a diversified field to the table. And it's all about working and building those relationships. I mean, we need to have a professional relationship with, with the board, the board of county commissioners. We need to understand that, you know, we're on the same team. We're trying to better our community, whether it's the county as a whole, or if it's, you know, education or public safety, whatever it may be. And I think just bridging that gap to where we can sit down at the table and negotiate where we need to negotiate to better our community is what needs to happen. And I believe with my qualifications, I can do that very well. So that's, that's one, the thing that I can definitely say that, that we need to do, and it really needs to happen soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
Well, I, I think communication is the key. And I think that if you can get the right people in there, I think I would be one of the right people in there that's going to possess the leadership and the ability to negotiate, the ability to communicate effectively, it would be, it would go in a positive direction. As principal for 20 years, supervisor, you learn how to negotiate, you learn how to compromise, because you're dealing with people all the time. You're dealing with businesses, you're dealing with parents, you're dealing with students, you're dealing with community organizations, athletic organizations, that all revolve around fundraising. They revolve around basically socialization. That's what they revolve around. And I think that we have to mend some fences. There have been some things that were said, probably on either side, that I guess the county commissioners would take offense to. I think the Board of Education members took offense to some of the things that happened. And I think it's, a lot of it is because of the frustration, because if the money's not there, you get frustrated, and you start making demands instead of starting to looking to negotiate and compromise. And I think we need to sit down, I think we need to talk. And once the new board is, is formed in January, that's the time to start that process. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Deb?
I think that the key to working well together is having a group of people who are committed to working well together. And I think that's the key here. I think that it's important to acknowledge that the Board of Education and the county commissioners are really two pieces of the puzzle in this community, that they are not and should not be at odds, that they should be working together to better our community. Strong schools have a positive impact on local economies. So funding for schools is an important piece of, of county funding. But the key to working together is to have, you know, a collaborative spirit, to be respectful of one another, acknowledge the limitations financially that we have, and really sit down and talk and communicate with one another about how we can best allocate the resources that we do have for the betterment of our students and for our community as a whole.
Thank you, Deb. Tony?
Well, I think that pretty much what everybody's already said is what I would say. The words that come to my mind are listening. I think that, again, I believe I'm a good listener. And I think to cultivate a relationship with the county commissioners, listening and being able to, you know, form those relationships in such a way that people think that you're not talking at them, that you're talking with them, is really important. And, you know, the idea of being a leader in those conversations and in those relationships, I think is important, too. And I'm, I'm certain that I would be good at those things.
Thank you, Tony. Ed?
Okay. It may surprise people, but when I was on the board, and I've been off until I got right back on this year, I was off for three years. I really believe there is a much better relationship between the county commissioners and the board now. between the County Commissioners and the Board now than when I was on the board before. Personally, I know all three Commissioners, and I don't believe there is any dislike between us, which means I think we can communicate with one another. I can give you an example. When I was on the board before, we had a joint meeting with the Commissioners over a funding issue for something called BPEC, which was the shared computer system between the County Commissioners and the Board of Education. And there was an issue over how much funding each entity was to put up. And it was a serious problem. They talked about it for about 35, 40 minutes. And finally, the Board assigned me and the County assigned Jake to meet separately, which we did immediately after the meeting. We solved the problem in five minutes because Jake and I respect one another. Previously, the Board and the County Commissioners were sniping each other constantly through the media, either radio or by the newspaper, and that just exacerbated things. So I think the key, and I've heard people use the word communication, and sometimes that's overused. But I think the key is to stay away from discussing things through the media. Do it face-to-face to one another. And you remember that we're all in this together. We both had the same problems. We both have funding problems. And we can meet and resolve these problems before they get out in public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Linda?
I think that the most important thing is communication. I think our previous County Commissioners and the Board of Education members at one time, it turned into a he said, she said, and there was so much back and forth. I agree with Dr. Root. When it gets to the media, sometimes it gets distorted. We need to communicate, collaborate, and compromise. I think compromise is important. We don't always get our own way. We don't always get what we think we should get. And I think that's happened previously. There's a little bit of entitlement that this person, this organization thinks they deserve more of the county budget than the other. It just has to be some compromising and communication. I have experience with writing grants and I have experience with budgets and how to maintain them and how to distribute them. So I think with my background, I understand a budget. I understand what is allowed, what can be moved around, what can be changed as you go along. And I understand grants. I understand how you write a grant, what needs to be in that grant, and how you need to monitor and show some accountability. So I think I have the background that could help with our budgets and what needs to be done for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal?
Hey, absolutely. I think I can have a good working relationship if I'm on the board with the Board members and with the County Commissioners. That's one reason I decided to run, because I know that I'm capable of forming those relationships and getting along and doing what needs done to maintain an open line of communication. I think a lot of people forget that you don't always have to agree. You don't have to necessarily approve everything the other person is doing, but if you can sit down and have an open dialogue and communication and work together. The Board needs the County Commissioners, and that's who funds the budget. So you've got to keep things open there so everybody can talk and discuss your needs and your wants and how things are going to go. One of my goals before coronavirus was to reach out to everyone individually, get to know the other candidates, the County Commissioners as well, and start building those relationships. But unfortunately, we're a little limited in what we can do now and not quite able to do that. But hopefully, hopefully, we can get back to normal soon and the new board can work together as a team and keep that open communication with the county.
Thank you, Crystal. David?
I may want to wait until the Lavelle siren stops blowing right outside.
Jerry, come back to you? Are you okay?
If you don't mind, I mean, we get this about, you might want to mute me. We get this at least three times a day. So I've got 90 seconds left before it's going to be quiet.
Okay, hang on, hang on two minutes. We'll go with Tammy next. Tammy?
I think that when I first ran for the board is when the relationship between the Board and the County Commissioners was quite difficult. I took it upon myself as I was running, as well as as I've served on the board, to go to County Commissioner meetings and sit in the audience and be part of the process of the total thing that they have to do, not just specific to education, but also to try to be a partner with them in what they're doing and what they're happening to fund for law enforcement and Sheriff's Office and everything else. Because like somebody said, we're just a piece of the puzzle of the county. We're a big piece of it, but we're just a piece of it. So we need to be willing to work together as a team. And I think that one of the things, I went to a conference before where there was a county that they literally had a monthly meeting that would be considered an open meeting because you'd have the Board members, all the Board of Education members and the County Commissioners together. But they made it like a dinner where they all sat around the dinner table, which of course, right now, we can't do that. But we can try to ensure that we have some kind of communication that's on a regular basis, not just when we need something and not just when we want something. But we should be having that communication all throughout the entire time and build that relationship. And the only way you can do that is actually go out and be part of the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. Dr. Bond?
So thanks, Stu. So I think that I would have to disagree with some of the statements. I agree with Dr. Root. I think our relationship has improved even since I was campaigning back in 2018. Some of the things that the county was very upset about was that our budget was notoriously late. So up to almost a year past due. This year, we got the budget in on time. It was about two weeks late because of a health issue with one of our personnel that was critical and finishing it. Not only that, we submitted a budget to the county that was, Mr. Blank put together, a budget that was at maintenance of effort. We didn't ask for more than what the state mandated for maintenance of effort. We had a personal request from Jake Shade, the president of the Commissioners, to add social workers. And we did that. We were able to add four licensed clinical social workers or psychologists to our staff, which I think is an incredible addition to our services. So another thing that's important, I think we can work on next term, is to talk about combining some of the common services with the Commissioners. Here comes the whistle again. Since our funding comes mostly from the county, why should we have duplication? I would like to work with the Commissioners in finding some common things that, as a county that doesn't have a lot of income, we're looking at ways to save resources that can be then allocated to where they're more needed. So.
Thank you, Deb.
It's probably enough.
Thank you, Deb. All right, question number five goes to Stephen first. The COVID-19 outbreak has obviously proved challenging for everyone. Assess how you think Allegheny County Public Schools has handled it to this point, and what would you change in preparing for similar incidents in the future? Stephen?
Well, first of all, I think Allegheny County's whole system has handled it as best they could. We got caught off guard, there's no doubt about it, but we've all of a sudden kind of pooled everything together. I could tell you firsthand that teachers are going over and beyond because I have three grandchildren that I'm helping do their online work. And they answer questions, they keep their office hours, they put the material out there. The biggest frustration that we have to look to correct is not in the material that's given and the instruction is given, it's on the frustration from the device that you receive it. You know, phones, laptops, iPads, tablets, desktops, all have different capabilities. And one of the biggest frustrations in talking to parents and in myself also is the fact that when that material was out there and you email the teacher and you say, "Hey, I can't find that tab," and she says, "Well, yeah, it's right there. It's up there on the right. That's where the submit is." Well, that's true on a laptop, but that's not necessarily true on an iPad. And I think one of the things we need to do is give not only kids, kids are pretty good at technology, by the way, so they probably adapt real quick. But as a parent, we can offer, during parent conference days, some ways to help parents figure out what the place might use and to avoid that frustration. When the frustration disappears, learning takes off. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Deb?
Well, first I want to say that I think that the current board has done an excellent job in responding to what was an unexpected and unprecedented situation. So kudos, kudos to them. I think that the most challenging issue that we have and perhaps something that can be looked at to prepare for anything that comes up in the future like this is access for kids. So, and I mean internet access, Wi-Fi access, access points. I know that at the beginning of the online work, there were provisions made for students who didn't have access to the internet or didn't have access to computers, to have paper packets, which I think was a great solution. And now, as time has gone on, the Board has worked to try to have increased Wi-Fi hotspots for kids so that they can get on. But, you know, internet access in rural communities has been an issue. And it's not just a, it's not really a school system issue. It's a broader issue, but it's something that needs to be looked at in a broader way. And it's my hope that this, that one positive outcome of this crisis is that folks at the state level realize the importance of access to internet in rural areas like ours. So I think that's one of the best things we can do to prepare for situations like this in the future.
Thank you, Deb. Looks like Tony had to step away. Dr. Root, you're next.
Okay, COVID-19 has been a major disaster for most public schools. It's forced us to rely on distance learning and learning packets, which is basically what the rest of the state is doing because there aren't very many other options. And if you read the Sunday paper, they devoted an entire page primarily to kids from Mountain Ridge who were evaluating what was going on. And while the kids were polite and they were generally favorably disposed to what was going on, they pointed out some of the limitations of distance learning and packets. When they had questions, it was tough, although the teachers and the administrators are trying to do a good job and are doing as best they can under the circumstances. The one young lady pointed out, she's working on math. She said it would have been so much easier to be in a classroom and have the teacher work a problem on the board so I could see how to do it. Well, that's not necessarily possible with this. And we also have the connectivity problem. Neil Grove, our IT person, says roughly about 20% of Allegheny County is not capable of being connected. And there is another percentage, 15, 20%, where the families either can't afford computers or have too many kids to share a single computer. So I'm not sure how we deal with the connectivity problem. We need some improvements probably in technology to do it. They're talking about hotspots, but one of our board members uses that and it doesn't work real well for him. And the biggest problem we have is it's a state decision. This is mandated. We don't have a role in the decision-making unless we're consulted. And I have the concern that we might be ordered back unprepared. Mr. Blank told me he needs a week to two weeks if we're going to reopen the schools to get everybody up and on the same page, because there are a lot of instructional decisions that are going to have to be made. Okay, I even tried a proposal for alternating days with half the kids in a class, but that won't work either. After talking to bus drivers, you can't get kids to school without, with a social distance requirement. So right now, there's no better solution than what we're doing.
Thank you. Linda?
I think that the teachers in our system have done an amazing job. I have many friends who are teachers and they are just doing superhuman things to keep contact with their kids and to make sure their kids are still learning. I know, having worked in the school system, how tough it is to even get a substitute packet together, to have everything for just a day in the classroom. So what they have been faced with has been truly amazing. I think we need to look at expanding broadband. That's where we have to work with our County Commissioners, our business people, our legislators. I think one thing we can look at is looking at our internet as a utility. Electricity, water, gas, we all have to have it. In this day and age of technology, we have to have the internet capabilities for our kids to use distance learning. I know there's been a lot of problems with even people working from home having access. The Board did a great job when they secured over 3,500 Chromebooks for those students who did not have access to computers at home. I know it was wonderful that they got a way to work out free internet for those families that could not afford it. I just think the Board and the superintendent has done a great job of trying to keep all of this together under a really bad situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal?
Okay, second. Again, for what everyone else has said, I do think the school system's did a great job handling this. I don't have any better solutions that they could have come up with, the packets, those who have internet. It's working great for our family. We have a computer, we have good internet service, but we live in Cumberland. Broadband, internet, Wi-Fi for everyone is a great idea, but that's timely and it's costly. So we need a better solution. In the meantime, if schools don't go back in the fall, then we've got this problem extended at the end of summer and we need to come up with a plan. Flintstone, Old Town, Little Orleans, you're not going to get internet to some of these houses in a few months if this continues on. It's just not possible if you've been to some of the places out there. I've talked to many friends, satellite internet isn't that good of an option. They're limited if they're using a hotspot on their phone, two certain gigabyte a day. When you have more than one kid, they're using that up. I think that once the social distancing restrictions are lifted a little bit, the kids in the city who don't have internet access are able to go to the county library, use the computer, whatever they need. A suggestion, a thought that I have is that if we could get the local fire department, the fire hall in Flintstone, Little Orleans, those areas, maybe come together, maybe provide some days, a couple hours here and there where parents could go in and allow their children to access the internet, log on, use the time they can. Obviously, there's a lot that would go into that as well, but get the community pulled together and come up with a solution in the meantime until we can get something figured out in the long term because it's not the school system's responsibility to provide internet for anyone. If the hotspots are available, great, but I don't know if it's going to go that direction that quick.
Thank you, Crystal. David?
Well, first, I'd just like to say thanks to everybody for, you know, your positive comments about the job the school system has done. You know, the entire team, it really has had little to do with the Board members and most to do with the team that's in place. And that goes from the interim superintendent all the way down. Our cafeteria workers in there preparing meals every day for students to pick up that otherwise may not have access to a meal that day. They're getting, you know, their two meals and a snack, which is incredible. And they're there every day. But like everybody said, I mean, we were lucky enough through the CARES Act to get those 3,500 computers, the Chromebooks. But what purpose do they serve if the kids can't log on? And I'd agree with Crystal that it's not the school board's place to put internet out there for everybody to access on. That's a great suggestion of having the fire halls and such open for parents as they're allowed with restrictions being released. But that's something that we, like Linda Widmore said, I'd have to say that getting that kind of access is something that, as a community, as a county, we desperately need, not just for our homes, not just for education with our students, but for businesses and everything. There's just too many areas, especially like Little Orleans, Flintstone, the Georges Creek area. There's just very little or poor access to any kind of broadband or high-speed connectivity. So I think Deb talked about that. So I really don't have anything else to add because it really isn't something that can be corrected by the Board. And as far as what happens in the future, I would hope that if something like this, I desperately hope it never happens again. But if it should, I think we've proven that we have excellent people in place that provided the solutions we needed to get through as we have to this point. So thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Bond. Terry?
I'd like to thank everybody for recognizing the amount of work that went into being able to get where we are today. The work that was done spur of the moment on March 13th was something that was unprecedented and the, there was senior staff pulled together and were able to get that information out in a timely manner and the packets were also something that was a challenge. And it's still a challenge because we don't have a way to get them back. So, right now, the, the issue is that people are not learning, they're getting to work on things, but they're not learning from their teachers. They're not being educated by their teachers. So, one thing that I know we've been working on this last week and it's going into this coming week, is to ensure that the teachers are able to use Google Meet to be online for those kids that can be online, to allow them to actually see the teacher and, and see their classmates for that matter, but see their teacher and be able to get instruction directly, you know, face to face, although it's over a computer. So, that's one step in the right direction. I think the other thing, if this were to occur again, or even if this just continues, is to ensure that we do have that way to communicate with each other, even if it is over a computer or over a phone. Dr. Cobal did give us a briefing the other day and said that they have reached 99% of our students, which means some way, whether it was a phone, something. So, they, that's, that's a good sign because before that was down at like 75%. So, it did go up and that is what we need to focus on going forward.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael?
Distance learning is definitely the wave of the future. I mean, we're going to see a lot more distance learning programs be implemented because of the COVID crisis. And I, I think that the Allegheny County Board of Education has done a phenomenal job with implementing these packets and just online access and trying to get things squared away. And I believe the state has done the same, you know, staying great job. Governor Hogan has been a tremendous leader throughout this whole process. And it's unfortunate that in 2020, we're still discussing the fact that people do not have access to broadband internet. This is something that we really have to focus on moving forward and I think we need to go to our legislatures and, and try to see if there's a, there's a fix. It's not going to be an easy fix and it's not going to be something that's going to be very quick, but it's something that we need to focus on because in, in this year, 2020, we still have people without broadband. It's not good. I, I see internet access as a utility. I, I do see it as a utility. Everyone should have access and, and if, if we do not go back to school in the fall, I really hope that, you know, we are able to put some plans into place that we can provide all students with access. So, and I want to thank Deb for bringing that point up earlier. I mean, it's, it's something that we really need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next question goes to Deb first. What additional educational programs would you like to see implemented in Allegheny County schools? And are there any current programs you would like to see eliminated or adjusted? Deb?
Well, I, I don't know of any programs that are currently in place that I think should be eliminated. And I don't know whether, right off the top of my head, I have specific new program that I would be adding right now, but I, I would say that I think there have been new programs that have occurred in recent years that have been a great asset to the school system. The PTEC program, I think, has been a great addition, providing career readiness in the field of cybersecurity and computer technology. I think that's been fantastic. The apprenticeship program has been a really strong offering that we have provided in the school system. So, Biomed is a new program that has become very popular and is, is doing good things. So, I, I think that there are continually have been some additions. I was at some recent Board of Education meetings and, and there are going to be, there are going to continue to be more computer science additions, agricultural additions to the curriculum, and all of these things, I think, are wonderful additions.
Thank you, Deb. Tony?
So, did I miss the last question, the answer?
You did.
Yeah, my, my dog unplugged my computer, so I tried to get back on as fast as I could. But I don't know about anything that I would take away per se either, although there may be some things like I would get more knowledge as to what's going on. But one of the things I'm certain that I really hope that we can get more of is the ROTC program. I know there's a couple of schools that do it, something like that, but I would love to see that be something that we can get more of. And then, of course, the, the tech school out here, more and more kids, having more and more kids be able to go to, go to a place where they're going to absolutely learn a trade, so when they graduate, they, they've got that many more skills, you know, because just too often you hear about, you know, well, so and so's got this degree and that degree, but they're, you know, working for me, waiting tables, that kind of stuff, you know. I'd rather see the tech school just, you know, really do more and more. And of course, like I say, ROTC. But as far as anything taken away, I, I wouldn't know off the top of my head.
Thank you, Tony. Dr. Root?
One thing that I think we all need to be aware of, when you add or eliminate programs, there are budget implications. It's very hard to add programs without adjusting or eliminating some other programs. So, sometimes you're placed in a position of making priority decisions. Most new programs that schools would consider putting in are based on employers' requests. They, they want people able to work in certain areas or a student interest in adding programs and sometimes requirements in higher education. The area that I think we need to be most concerned about is in career education. We have a lot of programs, and I think that's one of the better kept secrets in Allegheny County. Our Career Center is an excellent school. But interests change. Kids don't necessarily want certain programs. I remember a few years ago, we eliminated agricultural education because nobody was signing up for it. The last year, we tried to offer it, we only had two students. Now, this current year, the previous board, before I got on it, decided to put some courses in and Dr. Cobal has done a great job. She reported to us at the last board meeting, there is strong interest in that program now. And maybe because it's been adjusted. All programs need to be monitored and adjusted as needed. The key is employability. Trades are very important and academic programs probably aren't going to change a whole lot.
Thank you, Dr. Root. Linda?
Having concluded my employment with the Board of Education at the Center for Career and Technical Education, I saw firsthand the amazing programs there and children doing things with their hands and learning skills. I think anything we can do to promote that works. Previously with our Maryland's Tomorrow Program, we did OJT on the Job Triumph and we paid employers 200 hours worth of help. And our objective was for the, for the students to get out into the world, work world, experience some different places. And in addition, once those kids were there for 200 hours, that employee saw what they could do and chose to keep them and pay them from their own payroll. I think ROTC is an excellent program. I, I, I would like to see that added. As far as anything being taken away, I can't think of anything offhand, but I firmly believe that every single child in our system, no one is more important or less important than the next student. And every child in our system should have an opportunity to experience all of the programs that we can provide to them and that we can expand. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal?
I can't say that there's anything I would eliminate, no. I think the more diverse and different variety of programs we can offer the children, everybody has a different interest and all of those are wonderful opportunities for them. I don't per se have a lot of experience with like the PTEC program and some of the technology stuff, but I have been involved. I think Leadership Allegheny is something our oldest son is probably going to be looking into, something he would benefit from. ROTC, what Tony said, that's a great idea. I don't have any new ideas to bring to the table, but I'd just like to see what we have to keep building on. I visited the Career Center back in February when they had the open house and one thing I was impressed with that I didn't know they offered was the law enforcement subsection. Fantastic. Lance and I visited in there and we were just very pleased that that existed and that those kids get that opportunity. So, I think anything we can specialize in, I understand there's a budget and you have to follow that, so you can't just add new things all the time, but building on what we have and everything that we have for these kids, just to get that little bit of exposure to it and might help them make a decision, be a part of it in high school, might change their mind. And then you've increased the decision-making process to speed it up when they get into the college years.
Thank you, Crystal. David?
I, I'd like to see kids exposed, our students exposed to the CCTE Center earlier so that it's not a decision they have to, to make at the end of their, their sophomore year. Let them go for an experience early on, ninth grade, eighth grade, and bring them back a few times so they're more aware of what we offer there. Similar to what Linda Widmire just commented on, I, I've, I've talked to some automotive, Mr. Wymer, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Timbrook, executives and owners of, of some of the various automotive centers in the area and dealerships in the area about getting our automotive students out into those environments and, and trying to form a relationship. And that's being looked at. The Masonry Program was merged into the Carpenter Program a while back and, and we've lost a lot of the skill programs in the CCTE. As, as a matter of fact, our lathes in that Career Center, the metal lathes are outdated, they're not digital, they're analog, they don't count for certification anymore. So, machinists and things that need digital experience on digital lathes, you can't get it there. It's not offered. So, some of the stuff is we need to put some more money into the Career Center so that the equipment is there and the programs are more desirable. I am happy to say that we have ag programs starting again, just a few classes, an ag program and a wildlife program in all three high schools in the fall. I'd like to see us continue to develop and grow PTEC. This year, there will be two graduates, this coming year, not this year, this coming year, two graduates will finish the program and holding both an AA and their high school diploma. What would I love to see, well, with 18.3% of the country being Hispanic and Spanish being a, becoming a true second language here, I would like to see us add a Spanish immersion program for the western end of the county where the feeder schools would go into Mountain Ridge. So, I'd like to see that because I think it'd be a useful language for business here in the United States. So, nothing I really want to take away, but I would like to see some additions. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Jerry?
I'd like to reiterate what most everyone said and that the programs that the county has developed over the last several years have been very successful and have been part of what's moving us forward as a county, especially across the state. We've had the ability to showcase many of our programs to other counties in the state that thought, how did you do that in Allegheny County without having the funding or the resources? And, and we showed them how we could do things and we could think outside the box. And I think that's what we need to continue to do. Much like everyone said, the Career Center, we do need to make sure that we focus on the careers that the students are interested in. We do allow the students to, to go, focus on the future, to see what the future holds for them and to see what they can do at the Career Center. I think we need to expand that just a little bit so that they have more time to see the different programs. I also know that this year, the Career Center and the new directors of career and college readiness are, are looking into doing surveys to find out what it is that kids are looking at. What, what do they want to do? And they're also reaching out to their businesses in the area and that's the key point, since this is the chambers forum. One of the key things is to ensure that we use our businesses as part of this process. Find out what they need and find out where we can increase the, the skills. The one program that I would like to see expanded is the Financial Literacy Program and the ability to make sure that all of our students are able to balance a checkbook, count money and know how to budget for themselves, because in the world we're living today, they're going to have to be able to do that right out of the book. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael?
I really don't have any suggestions of programs that should be removed from the curriculum. I do believe that we should focus on career level training for students that do not want to move on to higher learning. You know, we have to face that the, there are some students that will not seek college and we need to focus on training them to, to be in the trades and, and focus on that career level training that they need. So, when they do graduate high school, they can move on to something that they're, they're trained in and they can accelerate professionally at. But as far, as far as adding any programs to the, to the curriculum, that's, that's really the only thing that I, I can think of that would be a benefit to the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
Well, there are two ideas that I have. First of all, I'm glad we reinstated the agricultural program. Agricultural program works well at a comprehensive high school. It did not work well at the Career Center because those students lost touch with, with that comprehensive school. So, now that it's back, that's great and it should take off. But along with the agricultural program, I'm not sure that we shouldn't try to put some aquaculture in there. Aquaculture is big business right now, raising fish. And there's some money out there, there's some grant money out there to buy that equipment. And I don't think it would be too much of a cost for our county to include agriculture and aquaculture together. There's some, there's some elective classes we could have. The other thing I would say, it goes back to the Career Center and the comprehensive high school. In around 2010, 2011, we formed a coalition with ninth to 10th graders that were going to go to the Career Center. We offered them some of the basic construction classes that they need to get out of the way so that when they went to the Career Center, they could concentrate on their junior and senior years in the Building Trades Program. I think that's kind of slipped to the wayside now, so it might be something to revisit, to look at those ninth to 10th graders, getting some of those courses out of the way, those basic courses, so they could concentrate on some higher level things at the Career Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. The next question goes to Tony first. It is our last question prior to closing remarks. Tony, please share your thoughts on the most recent process used to select the interim superintendent of schools and now the process to select a permanent superintendent. Tony?
Can you repeat that question?
Please share your thoughts on the most recent process used to select the interim superintendent and now the process to select a permanent superintendent.
Well, I'm not, I'm not fully aware of what the process was to select the interim superintendent or necessarily outside of the one meeting that I attended a few months back and they were talking about that. I would say this. I think that like everything else, we need to, there, there needs to be maybe a lot, a lot more of a big tent way of, of deciding who should be in the running and then a very, very personal, hands-on way of deciding who's going to ultimately be in that position. But beyond that, I'm not 100% sure that I would, yeah, be able to speak really intelligently about the process because I haven't been involved.
Thank you, Tony. Dr. Root?
Well, I, I'm not sure what the process was when they selected the interim superintendent before. I do know they were under pressure, there was absolutely no time to do a search for a permanent superintendent. And given the period of, of the year that they were in, there certainly would not have been a successful search because by the time Dr. Cox was leaving, most superintendents already had their job and probably wouldn't be looking for another one. Now, the search that we're presently engaged in for a permanent superintendent is probably pretty standard boilerplate. We have a consultant from the Maryland Association of Boards of Education who is a very experienced educator, is also very experienced at doing these searches. And having been involved in perhaps 50 searches at prosper state, I can assure you that he's very thorough and he's not missing any steps. We did have a particular problem in that we're under such a time constraint, again, because of the coronavirus problem, that there are problems inherent in what we're trying to do. For example, trying to bring people in for in-person interviews is example, trying to bring people in for in-person interviews is probably just not feasible because of the airlines and because I'm not sure people want to expose themselves to the risk. Having various groups in the community meet with the candidates is also not very viable. So I'm not sure that we have an ideal situation in trying to select a permanent superintendent, but we will do the best we can under the circumstances.
Thank you, Dr. Root. Linda?
Having worked for the board, I've worked under five different superintendents. And I can honestly say that the two that were local, were the most approachable, were the easiest to get along with as an employee of the system. I think the process of appointing Jeff Blank as the interim superintendent was a great idea. I am a huge proponent of pulling from what we have. And we have very, lots and lots of talented people in our system who have been overlooked for one reason or the other. So that I think the process of bringing Jeff Blank on, who was familiar with the system, had worked 10 years under Dr. Cox, was the way to go. As far as the process for the new superintendent, I think everybody knows I'm against the process that is happening right now. If it's good enough for the state superintendent to postpone her retirement for another year, I think it's the smart thing to do for us to postpone looking for a superintendent, especially with the coronavirus. Mr. Blank has been there, walked us through this. He's been here the whole time with the executive groups, getting the learning together. And I think he just, you know, that process should be, take what we got and we know what he can do and he can move us into post coronavirus. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal?
I don't have any thoughts on how Jeff Blank was put in to be the interim superintendent. That's in the past. Moving forward, I know that the school board entered into the contract with Mabe to hire the superintendent. So can that be delayed or can they get out of that and postpone it to after coronavirus? That I don't know the answer to. But I do think with everything being so uncertain with the times that I would like to see, as the state already set their precedent, that Jeff Blank, if willing, I think he stated today that he is, would remain superintendent for one more year and allow the search to be postponed if it can be until 2021. I know with our business, it's really hard to hire anybody right now. And even at an entry level position, I'm hesitant with hiring if I can't conduct all the proper searches and background checks that I want to do. With superintendent, you want the community to be able to meet whoever the candidate is and ask questions and get to know them. And you want them to be able to travel to the area and check things out. And we're restricted right now. It's already May. Are they going to be lifted in June? We don't know that. And I believe someone needs to be in place by July 1st. So it seems to me that we're running out of time and it would be the best decision to stick with an interim and move forward next year.
Thank you, Crystal. David?
Well, I was involved in the selection for the interim process and we did do a national, well, we advertised locally, but it ended up going all over the country because of one of the topics prior to the internet. So we had a handful of applicants from, from all over and we interviewed them, we vetted them and we ended up hiring. So it was kind of a unique situation and it was kind of rushed. We're rushed. Am I breaking up?
A little bit.
So this time at Laval, the internet traffic becomes pretty congested. Anyway, this time it's, we're up against the wall again as far as time. We have this COVID situation that like Dr. Root had said, I feel the same way. Getting people here, having community interaction, which was one of the things the chamber wanted was to be able to have, you know, open forums and let people come in and business leaders meet, have them tour the area, see our businesses currently, at least as of today in Maryland, that's not possible. So, you know, I'm, I'm not 100%. When I signed on to this national search and it was a whole different environment, it was pre-COVID. So things have changed and as a board, we're having to adjust to that. And we haven't made a decision as to what direction we're going yet, but a lot of things are being looked at. And that's about all I can say.
Thank you, David. Tammy?
It's like the other board members have said, I, of course, was on the board for both of those appointments and this decision that's coming up. And unfortunately, we, you know, we really haven't made a decision. We're trying to go through the process and still follow the process that we signed on for. But much like Dr. Vaughn said, the COVID-19 wasn't around when we signed on for, for that. But we still are going through the process because originally the process had that in May, the interviews for the first round interviews would be done teleconference wise because we were trying to save money at that time, not because we didn't think they could travel. And that was a part of the original schedule. But then again, you know, it's a question, it still remains as to, you know, what type of caliber of people did we receive and do we have enough time to be able to interview them appropriately, even to the second round, which would have been in the month of June sometime. So we are still actively trying to work through this process and we have not made a decision. And I think one of the key things that is the appointment of a superintendent is probably one of the biggest jobs of a school board, if not the most important one. And that's what we have to, as a board, work together and collectively come up with what process we can do to ensure that our school system has somebody in place that can move our system forward. And so that's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael?
I'm not familiar with the process of appointing Mr. Blank to that position. However, I was a student of Mr. Blank's when he taught at Bell High School a long time ago. And I could tell you that he is one of the best teachers I ever had. As far as moving forward and selecting a permanent superintendent, I have advocated for a national search. You know, we have one opportunity to get this right. And at the end of the day, it may be Jeff Blank that pushes through and becomes a permanent superintendent, but we don't know that until we interview and reach out to candidates all over the country. And like Tammy just said, this is the most important selection of a board of education. So we have one chance of getting it correct and we need to interview as much as we can. As far as interviewing people through Zoom and Skype and video conferencing, if a doctor can diagnose and prescribe medication and illnesses and such through video conferencing, we can definitely hire a superintendent as well. So that's where I stand on the issue. And like I said, it's, this is unprecedented times that we need to push through and hopefully in the future, we can resume a normal interviewing process. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
Well, I think under the time constraints, Jeff Blank was a great choice. He didn't have a lot of time, so you had to get somebody in place. If it, I don't know what it would take, but my suggestion would be that you petition the state or the superintendent and delay this search, put it off for one year, ask Jeff Blank if he would remain for a year, then do the national search. Maybe does a great job. I've been through several superintendent searches. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with a national search. But at this time, Jeff Blank is aware of what's going on in the school system. He's aware of what it's going to take to get back up and get the speed here in Allegheny County. I think we need to stick with Jeff for a year. I think we need to keep everything in place for a year. Do the natural, do the national search a year from now when things are hopefully back to normal. And I, I'm not a big proponent of online interviews. I understand maybe for initial interviews, I'd like to see somebody eyeball to eyeball. I like to sit down, I just like to talk to them. So I would hope that we would be able to do that and not get a superintendent from an online chat and get them from eyeball to eyeball, mouth to mouth interviews.
Thank you, Stephen. David?
As far as the interim appointment of Jeff Blank, you know, I understand that the timeframe that was available required us to move very quickly for that. And so the board made the decision to appoint an interim rather than a permanent superintendent. I think that made sense. As for the current search, I mean, I'm not privy to all, you know, since I'm not a current board member, I'm not privy to all that's going on with the search in terms of any candidates that they might have been interviewing or who, who is part of the search. I will say that I am absolutely in favor of doing a national search. I agree that there's a lot of incredible talent in the county, but I think that it just makes sense to open up a search to anybody who is interested in the position. Having more opportunity for people with other experiences just is a benefit to our county. I, I can't speak necessarily to whether I think we should yet put the, definitely have Jeff Blank continue because it's not clear to me exactly how this is going to play out from here to July 1st. And like I said, I don't know who the board has interviewed. So I wouldn't want to kind of speak out of turn there. But I am happy that the board engaged Mabe and is doing a national search.
Thank you. Is us to close with remarks. My drumstick, everybody, you have two minutes for these as well. We're going to start out with Dr. Root for closing remarks. Go ahead.
Okay. In closing, I would point out that a board member can do the minimum or a board member can do more than required. I remember sitting in a meeting with a newly elected board member as we were dividing up jobs and dates that were being assigned and so on. And that member interrupted and said, wait a minute, guys, I thought this was a one day a month job. It's a lot more than that. I will always try to do more than the minimum. And of all the things accomplished during my previous term, as I've served, I'd like to point out four of which I am particularly proud and also point out that I did not do these. The board did these, the five of us working together. The PTEC program has been mentioned and two students, that started under me, under my previous tenure on the board. And to have two students now at the end getting their high school applying AA degrees, really impressive. And the Chinese immersion program, which started during my first term, right here in Allegheny County, we have an award winning program which enables students to read, write and speak Chinese. Think of the opportunities those children will have in life. Well, right now China is our chief competitor in the world, but in the future, they may be our adversary. In addition to their job opportunities, these students will be a phenomenal resource to the United States of America and we need those people. The academic learning lab, which you may not be familiar with, but students use computers and learn cooperatively, working in teams. We got the idea from Sarasota Floridans sent a team down. They came back so enthusiastic that we found the money to implement it on a trial basis in one elementary school.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. The most difficult challenge was the construction of the new Allegheny High School, which you now can see. And a lot of people didn't think we'd ever be able to do that because we were $14 million short initially. We deferred a year, we got the funding thanks to city council, county commissioners, interagency commission, governor, Board of Public Works, legislative delegation, and many members of the community. With three good high schools, economic development has another tool with which to attract business to this area. And lastly, I will not be a board member who does the minimum. I will work and serve the citizens of Allegheny County and our students. And I ask you, the voters, to consider me when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Linda.
In closing, I think that the experience I have of having boots on the ground and in the trenches in the school buildings gives me an advantage to know what goes on in those buildings, what the teachers face, what the kids are facing. It's important to me as a board member to facilitate partnerships. And we need to do that between our teachers, our administrators, our parents, our community partners. And one of the people that work in the school system that I think are overlooked many, many times are the paraprofessionals, the instructional aides. They're with the kids every day, the same way a teacher is, and nobody ever worries about their salaries or what's happening with them. They're not given the input. So I'm, as a board member, I would want to bring all of those people together. I think it's important that we include everyone when we make a decision that's going to influence our children. And the kids have to be part of it too, especially the high school kids. And we have a member on the board and that's great, but I think we need a little bit more input. We need to depend on our communities, the businesses, the chamber, everybody that has our kids' best interest is what I want to see happen with the board. And therefore I think I would be an excellent candidate. I have a passion for these kids and what goes on. And I'm just looking forward to June the 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Crystal?
Again, I just want to say I'm coming into this as a parent with kids who are currently in the school system. So I have the best interest of all the students at heart. I'm very close with many teachers and I hear them express concerns about things in the day-to-day operations and I can be a voice for them. And then also as a business owner, and we've always been very active in the community and do whatever we can. And I would keep that going as well. I'm not coming into this with my own agenda or anything that I'm upset about. I think there's a lot of positive that doesn't get talked about. And I am happy with the school system, but I want to continue that and make any improvements that we can. I deal with employees and coworkers and customers every day. So I'm used to different personalities and different types of people, problem solving. And I think that I'm capable to sit on the board and do all those things and work with however diverse the group may be and capable to take it forward and go from there.
Thank you, Crystal. David?
Well, first of all, I'd like, it has been a pleasure serving these 18 months or so that I've been a member of the board. And it is my desire to go forward and continue moving the school system in the direction that we've been going, which is where teachers are happier to teach than they have been in a long time. And our system's running really, really smoothly, actually. Now, you'll hear and read a lot of promises and, and things that candidates will do. And I have to tell you, I said some of the same things, you know, whenever I was running. And until you really understand, like Dr. Root said, what all is involved in being on a board and how much time it does take, you really won't appreciate that. Many of our decisions are limited and constrained by state and federal law and, or state board directives. And you really can't make as many changes as you think you may like to make. I'm running for reelection because there is a lot left to do and, and I know I have more to contribute. So if you do like the direction that things are going, then I ask and appreciate your support for my reelection. It has been a pleasure to serve our students, the teachers, our staff and the community that I grew up in. So thanks for having me on here, Stu.
Thank you, David. Tammy?
I'd like to first thank the chamber for doing this forum. It is going to help us all in the community to learn about the candidates. I know most of us got our ballots in the mail over the weekend or starting to get them now. And I know that I asked that each person that's out there listening to this, that you listen to each candidate. And if you have any questions, you reach out to the candidates directly and find out what their opinion is or what their comments are. I reiterate what Dr. Root said, when I started this, I was just a parent that wanted to be part of the process. And I can say that the number of hours that you put in is the amount of hours that you're willing to put in. And it's going to take a lot of work to be on the board and it does take a lot of your time. But by doing that, you're making a difference, not just for your own family, but the entire community. And I think that that's one of the biggest pleasures that I have is to see kids come up and say thank you, come up and say thank you for, you know, having this program or that program and also being part of the community and getting out there. We don't want board members that are going to stay behind the scenes and just go to a meeting. You need to be part of the community and you need to be part of the process. And I believe that I've been able to do that in the last four years that I've served on the board. And I'd like to continue moving forward with that. I'd also like to continue moving forward at the state level to make sure everybody knows where Allegheny County is and where the best place is to live. So please vote for me, Tammy Clayley, for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Michael?
Thanks, Stu. And I want to thank you again. Thanks, Stu, and I want to thank you again for hosting this event this evening. In closing, I just want to reiterate to you that I'm running in this election to be a voice for all students, teachers, and parents, and to make the decisions necessary to better our public education system. I do not have all the answers, and quite frankly, you may not support my candidacy, but rest assured that if I'm elected to this office, I will do everything in my power to ensure that the students can learn in a safe and healthy learning environment, are given equal opportunity, and are prepared for higher learning or entry into the workforce. If you would like more information about my campaign, please go to my website at electmichaelleppich.com, and you can also check out my Facebook page as well. I hope to earn your support and your vote during the primary election. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
Well, I think in order to be a board member, you do have to have a passion for education. I, I think you have to understand the demands that are going to be, be on you. You guys understand the demands of also, that's also on students, faculty, parents, and, you know, we're holding everybody accountable. Well, you have to understand what the accountability is for each one of those puzzles, and with the experience that I have, I think I can, I can pretty well take that into consideration and go in the right direction. One of the things that I would say, from my past experience, right now, we're in a time with, with COVID that we need to know what the past, how we did some things, and be able to move on, because there's a lot of uncertainties. When we open up buildings with, getting, trying to get back to normal, we have to be healthy, we have to be safe, do we have extracurricular activities, do we have band? What are some things, if we're going to have them, what are the constraints? What are the things we have to consider? And I think if you have a candidate that has a lot of past experience, then they understand the daily operations, the nuts and bolts of the system, and we could concentrate, or at least I could concentrate on, doing some things to open up the buildings with these uncertainties that are hanging over our heads. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Deb?
Well, I decided to run for Board of Education because education is very important to me, and this community is very important to me, so if I do become a member of the Board of Education, it's my intention to give it my all and to put in the hours, whatever those hours are, necessary to do my part to strengthen the education that students receive in this community, to strengthen, maintain and strengthen the resources that our teachers have to do their jobs, and if anyone has any questions about what I believe in, or what I think about certain issues, I encourage people to either contact me through my Facebook page or to email me, I'm always happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Deb. Tony?
Well, I think that so often, at least in my experience through my 15 years back in Cumberland, and even, even as a kid, I remember my mother was on the board and stuff. So much of it always is about budget, 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 and money, and money, and money, you know, one way or the other. And I want to, I really think, especially with seeing my kids through all the years they've been in school here, I really think that it has to be about way more than that, and I think that, of course, the budget's important, but so many other things on a day-to-day basis, even things that may seem small, it may seem, you know, oh, well, that's this or that, that are really, really important, and I think we need to get back to some of those things, and having some of those things be at the forefront of the conversation, you know, and really, and really, really using common sense when we think about decisions we make when it comes to the education system in Allegheny County. Not just from a standpoint of education as books and tests, but also education when it comes to sort of cultural education, and, you know, the overall culture of the school, you know. I've done some volunteer work and some mentoring throughout the Union Rescue Mission, and through that, I've made some connections in some of the different schools, and I realized that there's a really, I want to say bad, and it is, it's a bad culture of just discontent and sort of worldly ideal that it's just like, whoa, you, you just got to go, holy crap, but, you know, I think there's a way to get back to, again, back to basics, back to common sense, and, you know, one of the things I always think about is self-defense, like my daughter and her self-defense in school, it drives me insane, but everybody always says, hey, you know, you can't do anything about that. Well, I ask, you know, why not? Why can't we do anything about that? So, I feel like there's a lot of things that we can be doing differently, we can use a lot more common sense, and really looking at what, what was, and getting back to the basics. So, if you vote for me, it's just going to be a vote for somebody who's willing to put in the work, who truly cares about students and education, and who's willing to really, you know, get hands-on and get into schools and talk to the teachers and meet with the students, so, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. That concludes our forum. I'd like to thank Jeremy Irons, Legislative Committee Chair for the Chamber of Commerce, for his help. He is a pleasure to work with and excellent community partner. Thank you, Jeremy. Finally, I'd like to thank all of our candidates for their participation and wish them all the best of luck. Voting for the June 2nd election will be held primarily by mail. Ballots are currently being mailed to all registered and eligible voters beginning May 21st through June 2nd. There will be a ballot box, excuse me, a ballot drop box located at the Allegheny County Office Complex, Center 1, Cattleberry Road in Cumberland. In addition, there will be one in-person vote center open on June 2nd for voters who cannot vote by mail, also at the county office complex. Social distancing guidelines will be followed at the county complex, and voters should wear masks. The Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce encourages everyone to vote and to make informed decisions on election day. Thank you.